Hey, peace, peace, family. Welcome to another study session. This is a blueprint for Black Power. Study session. I am Kimba. A pleasure, pleasure, pleasure to be doing number nineteen. You know, I'm excited about having this conversation, this examination of Dr. Amos Wilson's text, The Blueprint for Black Power. Uh, before we get into it, because uh, today I'm just gonna be reviewing chapter one, and then I'm gonna jump into chapter two. Let me make sure. Make sure I'm set, alright. Yeah, so today I'm gonna be reviewing chapter one. I finished chapter one of Dr. Amos Wilson's Blueprint for Black Power. Um, so I'mma go back over uh, the highlights of the chapter, and then I'm going to just read paragraph or two of chapter two to get started, because that's our next journey, being on to the, on to the next phase of chapter two. Um, I think we got a lot out of chapter one. Um, there was a lot that we discussed, a lot that we reviewed. Um, and so hopefully, you know, you guys who have been tuning into this uh, study session have been able to take a lot from uh, these, these discussions and um, the analysis that I'm giving. Um, and so again, like, we're gonna move on to the next phase. So anybody who is just joining us, make sure you go back, check out uh, the discussions that we've been having around chapter one. Um, so you can catch up, uh, and make sure that you subscribe to the channel. We charge colonialism. Make sure you like and share this as well, so that we can have as many people that are a part of this examination as possible. And hopefully, you know, if you're a part of an organization, or you plan on joining an organization, you can take uh, some of this analysis into that organization as we continue to build uh, towards black advancement, black liberation, black power. Uh, before we get into the text though, um, and the review, uh, just a couple of, well, one thing I wanna pull up, I'm gonna share my screen. There is a uh, conference going on in Atlanta that I want to uplift, because I wanna make sure as, as many of us know about it as possible, and if we can get on the ground and be in Atlanta this June, uh, making sure that we are there participating in some capacity. Uh, let me share my screen. So I just wanna show you the information. I'm gonna put a link in the chat as well. So you guys can click on the link and register. Alright, um, so this is, I'm at Community Movement Builders website, and I'm gonna scroll up right there, so if you guys can see that, save that date right there. National Black Radical Organizing Conference. And try to make it a little bigger, uh, connecting the national black struggle for self-determination with Pan-Africanism. That's gonna be the theme, uh, from June twenty-third to the twenty-fifth uh, this June, so um, like I said, I'm gonna put this in the chat so that you can have that. And yes, I will be on the ground. I will be there. Uh, I'm supposed to be presenting, um, so you know, hopefully everything goes well with that, but I'll be on the ground this June. Alright, so with that being said, again, make sure you like, like and share, like and share, subscribe to the channel. I'm gonna pull up a PowerPoint. Uh, my intentions is not to spend a lot of time on the PowerPoint on this review, um, but as always, man, when I get into this, it's just so much information. Uh, a lot of this that Dr. Amos Wilson has given us, I mean, it inspires me to just go deeper with the information. Um, so sometimes, you know, I have to stop and just like really reflect on what's being said. Uh, but with this review, I do wanna try to get through it so that we can discuss chapter two a bit. So I'm gonna sh- share my screen so you can see the PowerPoint. And peace to everybody that's out there. Amani not uhuru. Alright. Uh, give me one second, y'all. Bear with me, bear with me. I'm producing and, and uh, hosting the show, but we gonna get a little bit more, more organized, man. I'mma get me, get myself a producer so we can run this a little quicker and smoother. Uh, but I was, I came across this video earlier, actually uh, didn't plan, didn't plan to show this video during this, during this podcast, but there, there was this brother I came across when just perusing, looking for some Dr. Amos Wilson videos to possibly play. And uh, this brother by the name of Jeremiah, Jeremiah Owusu Karimor. I, I've never heard of him. You guys may be familiar with him. I feel like I'm always out of the loop. Um, but I'mma share my screen. He talks about that Dr. Amos Wilson impact that Dr. Amos Wilson had on him. There you go. There we go.
Mark and Tracy have outgrown their old place and are looking to buy a new one.
But selling and buying?
Alright, so I saw you reading that Amos Wilson book earlier, right? Um, what is it about his teachers that really resonates with you?
As a heavy hitter, man. Baba Amos Wilson, Dr. Amos Wilson, um, for me in these last two to three years is my premier scholar, I would say. Really woke me up and really guided me on that path to understand what it truly meant to study African history. Um, he has a famous quote, um, dealing with true nationalism. And he says, "True nationalism," you know, "takes its tradition, um, its African tradition and puts it in the context." Um, you know, that true nationalist doesn't take tradition just for tradition's sake. And um, say, "Oh, well, just because this happened back then, I'm gonna do this." Uh, but more so takes his history into context to see how it can be productive to him, um, and his economical, socio-political, um, and his family structure, um, as it, as it refers to the twenty-first century. Um, so Amos Wilson, I think, is for me, the guy that I go to, um, whether I'm traveling or, you know, I'm just sitting down chilling, whether it's Blueprint uh, to Black Power, African Consciousness versus New World Order, falsification of African consciousness, you know, Black Genius. He has a bunch of titles that, um, I really cling to. Uh, that's, I mean, that is phenomenal works on what it really means to not only study African history, but to understand your context and what you're in. Um, and not just take something from just, you know, and I believe he's one of those guys that said, "Hey, you know, I know we, you know, we wanna be uh, you know, Pan-Africanist, and I know we wanna, you know, do this and do that for our people, but it's, it's contradictory if we, you know, scream African, you know, African consciousness, Black Power." Right hand, by the way. Um, and um, we go outside and then everything else is owned by another people. Right? We built the pyramid. Okay, matter of fact, I'mma tell you, I built the pyramid. You know, um, now what? You know, he was a guy that really challenged the minds of those, um, everybody who listened to him. And he called for a sense of urgency. Um, and not only a sense of urgency, but an urgency for the senses. Um, and call for urgency for you to change and control your environment, what you, what you smell, what you drink, what you see, what you take, you know, with everything, everything that you hear, your music, he hit on it all. He really opened my eyes to not only the senses, but also to organization. You know, he said that power, um, and, and the resources to which power brings is void of itself if you don't have organization. Um, he does a thorough study on the UNIA, and the Nation of Islam, the Black Panther Party, all of these real revolutionary uh, groups and organizations that um, has done a lot for us in the diaspora, so, and abroad.
How were you, how were you exposed to his works initially?
That's a great question. I was exposed, how was I exposed to Amos Wilson? You know what? I was exposed to Amos Wilson by Mwaluni Baba Baruti. My brother, he's still alive. He's out in Atlanta, and he has about thirty-plus books out. Now, that was a guy, you know, that really was a teacher, like he had his lectures, and you just sit there and listen to the lectures. Um, he was a guy you had to pay for his lectures, you know, he'd give you a little clip on uh, YouTube, but you had to, you know, go pay for his, but that, that's a, a scholar that I would, I would love for people, at least young brothers, to really get into. We've got books called Identity, um, Complementarism, um, or Complementarity. Um, really, that book, I think, for me, was, I think, the first book that I had read into with him, speaking about the family structure um, of male, female relations, which is very huge, um, in, in this revolution, you know, when they say that the revolution will not be televised. It's speaking of the mind, but it's also speaking of this internal system into which the family must grow. You know, if we're talking about a, a black family, and we're talking about the, the um, the rise of our nation, um, and our people, then it starts truly with self to family, to community, to nation. Um, so he recommended a book by Amos Wilson, um, that, the first book that I told you that I read, The African Consciousness Versus New World Order. He recommended that book in one of his lectures, and um, that's how I got into health. You know, crazy thing enough, when I, when he introduced me to Amo, I was just Amos all the way. I'm like, "Dad, I gotta go back and get the book by Ruti," but um, you know, with so many um, brothers that, that do contribute, um, to this process of um, really just seeing the world, not necessarily a different lens, but in an alternative lens into which benefits you most.
Alright, alright, yeah, definitely. I wanted to set it off with that right there. Um, and a brother was spot on with his analysis of what Dr. Amos Wilson is, is uh, teaching. Um, I, I mean, that was a great point, and when he said that, you know, Dr. Wilson, he, you know, Dr. Wilson's always talking about, you know, building, building something. All of this talk, you know, people are talking about Pan-Africanism, Black nationalism, Black power, you know, what are we building? You know, it can't just be a whole lot of talk, a whole lot of theory. You know, we have to be putting this into practice, uh, and also just studying history for history's sake, or studying just to study and be, I mean, we got people, have people out there, they have all the brains in the world, uh, but they're not, you know, organized. They're not a part of organization, they're not organizing people, they're not in the community, right? Um, and so, yeah, you know, you built the pyramids. I tell you, you built the pyramids. Okay, now what? Now what are we doing, right? Um, so the education piece is, is important, but it has to go hand in hand with the building process. Uh, and I think we're at that stage too, as a community, where we have a lot of people who, who are very conscious and know what's going on. And so now it's time to take the next step. There was a point where, you know, a lot of us weren't, you know, aware or, um, you know, weren't conscious to uh, African history. Um, and also just, a lot of us didn't have an analysis in regards to the system and how the system operates. But I think that time has passed, and it's not to say that, there's still a lot of, lot of uh, our people who are not conscious. That's why we're having this study. Uh, but it's up for us that do have the knowledge, you know, it's time to get out there in the community, it's time to build. Uh, so with that being said, I'm gonna pull this PowerPoint up. I probably jumped back and forth too, because as I go through this PowerPoint, and I was reviewing the PowerPoint earlier, I had a lot of thoughts and reg- uh, like it, 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 there was a lot of information that connected to some books or some videos that I thought would be good for this presentation. Um, so you'll see me stop sometimes and just pull up some, some information to reinforce uh, what is being said uh, in this PowerPoint. Alright, let me get this right. I'mma do my best to try to get through all of this. When I actually, when I, when I put this stuff together in my mind, it doesn't seem that long. I'm like, "Alright, put this together. This isn't a lot of information." But then when I start to get into it, uh, then we, then we're here for like two hours, but I, I, I'm not keeping y'all for two hours. Uh, so let me make sure y'all see my screen. Alright, I think y'all do see it. Yeah, man. Alright. Alright, I gotta double check, gotta double check. Alright, so y'all see, I just don't wanna do all the talking, y'all. See what I'm talking about. Alright, so from the current slide. So we, we did nineteen study sessions. We went through the chapter one. I know that's a lot of sessions, right? Uh, and it took, you know, I think it took some adjusting too, for me. Uh, when I actually first started, I would, I was doing seven-minute, seven-to-ten-minute clips because I didn't wanna make them long, but then after a while, I felt like, nah, I have to, I have to make these videos longer and really get into it. Uh, plus, I would never get through this book if I, if I kept doing that. Uh, so this is chapter one. One of the things that, everything that I'm gonna mention has been touched on in chapter one. Uh, this was a quote from chapter one. Dr. Wilson said, "The minds of blacks are used to forge the links of their own mental chains," right? And this is true, you know, Dr. Wilson is, is getting into the miseducation, miseducation of our indoctrination of black people that have us behaving in a way, thinking in a way that is detrimental to ourselves. The oppressor doesn't necessarily have to use force. He doesn't necessarily have to come into our community to hurt us or harm us. He can do it from afar, and he can also get people from our own community to harm us. This is why Dr. Amos Wilson wrote the book, Black on Black Violence, when he, when, when he's uh, examining uh, intercommunal violence or horizontal violence. And, and, and that book talks about how that type of violence is in service of white domination. So he gets to it in that book. Uh, so I, I'm gonna stop my screen and go to Dr. Carter G. Woodson. And what Dr. Carter G. Woodson says about this, because I think is very relevant. Alright, this is from The Miseducation of, of the Negro, which is a timeless, timeless uh, read, uh, timeless book. And so uh, I'm gonna read two paragraphs from here. This is connected to what Dr. Amos Wilson is talking about. So Carter G. Woodson says, "The so-called modern education with all its defects, however, does others so much more good than it does the Negro, because it has been worked out in conformity to the needs of those who have enslaved and oppressed weaker peoples," right? So even with his defects, even the education in the school system that Dr. Carter G. Woodson is talking about, it's a failure. It doesn't even work for white people, but it benefits them, you know, at the expense of black people. It benefits them, as bad as it is, um, it's still a system. Uh, it's still a, a system that operates within a racist system, so white people with their privileges, they're still able, even though they're being oppressed and exploited as well, they don't have to suffer um, from the likes of racism, the institution of racism, or the system of racism. Um, so it allows them to, to be able to uh, climb the social ladder, or, or like climb or step on, on top of the pedestal of uh, the labor of black people within this, um, within this system. Um, so, so let me go on. He says, "For example, the philosophy and ethics resulting from our educational system had justified slavery, penitence, segregation, and lynching. The oppressor has the right to exploit, to handicap, and to kill the oppressed. Negroes deli-educated in the tenets of such a religion of the strong have accepted the status of the weak as the divinely ordained, and during the last three generations of their nominal freedom, they have done practically nothing to change it. Their pouting and resolutions indulged in by a few of the race have been of little, have been of little avail. No systematic effort toward change has been possible for. Talk the same economics, history, philosophy, literature, and religion, which have established a present code of morals, the Negro's mind has been brought under the control of his oppressor. The problem of holding the Negro down therefore is easily solved. When you control a man's thinking, you do not have to worry about his actions. You do not have to tell him not to stand here or go yonder. He will find his proper place and will stay in it. You do not need to send him to the back door. He will go without being told. In fact, if there is no back door, he will cut one for a special benefit. His education makes it necessary." Right? Again, that's going back to the miseducation, the mind of the Negro, you know, cutting that back door, cutting out or creating or designing systems of oppression for himself within his community. Um, and so, you know, this has to change, and many of us who are conscious, we, we are ones who are like really building those institutions, right, to combat this. Uh, but we just need more support from the community, right? But the community is in that category where they're operating in the way that is, that is, um, that is uh, uh, causing or reinforcing their own oppression, right? So they're engaged in, in, in the system of oppression exploitation. Uh, at least when we engage in it, you know, we think in the ways of how we can like turn this around and use it against the, the oppressor, right? We're making conscious decisions uh, of um, how we're operating in this system. Uh, so let me share my screen, and we go back to this PowerPoint. Let's get it, get it, get it. So um, and it also reminds me of Steve Beagle, right? Uh, with Steve Beagle, I always said, "Most potent weapon of the oppressor is um, is the minds of the oppressed," right? Uh, so social domination. He talked about social domination in this, in this chapter. "Social domination occurs when the power of one person or group over another is exercised in a systematic manner at the expense of the dominant person or group." Alright, um, this is a good uh, graph. They have other um, uh, images uh, that show how the system, the hierarchy is within the social system, right? And in this capitalist system, colonial capitalist system, uh, where you have either, I mean, from a monarchy or um, the bourgeois, those are people who are at the top, the ruling class, right? Uh, with religion, church, these institutions, religious institutions, right? Uh, it's not this, it's, it's not just the religious institutions, though. I think it's any institutions that are created, because these so-called like spiritual systems, but there's things out there, right? Um, that are used to create this false consciousness, right? We develop this idea of who we are within the system that has nothing to do with our material conditions. Alright, and I'mma say that, you know, conversation for another time, but I, I think, like, this is what they're getting at right here with this graph, when they're talking about, "We fool you." Um, but, you know, the short of it all, though, that we're, it's a hierarchical system, uh, where those people at the bottom, African working class, and the black working class is being dominated, and it's a system that's, that's constructed to keep us at that bottom. And we have to be very aware of how the system operates. So just to go on in regards to social domination, he talks about domination refers to not a single exercise of power, but to a relationship between two social agents that is constituted by the existence of power differential between them, right? You have to have two, two groups, that for individuals are groups, right? There's a relationship between those groups. Um, and so when we talk about social domination, there has to be a dominator, and someone that's being dominated, right? Uh, and so he also talks about the subordination of people of color is functional to the operation of American society as we know it. And the color of one's skin is a primary determinant of people's position in the social structure. Uh, this right here too, I wanna pause just for a second here, because when we think about this, capitalism, you know, it doesn't, in a sense, it doesn't see, see color, right? Um, but capitalism isn't the only system of, of oppression that's at work in exploitation. Racism is at work. Uh, if, 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 um, you know, if everybody, let's just say tomorrow there was no black people in this country, or in this world, and everybody was white, you know, with the system of colonial, colonial capitalism, there has to be a distinction. So even if everybody was white, there will be this distinction based on religion or eye color or something, because there, under the system, there has to be a bottom class. And this is why race, this is why race is a determinant factor within this system, because black has become the bottom class. We have become the um, uh, the perpetual, the perpetual bottom class within the system of colonial capitalism. At its very inception, this system, at its very inception, when Columbus came to the Americas, the Spanish came to the Americas, the English came to the Americas, they were developing a system through the annexation of indigenous people land, and through the labor of African people. There was other, not to say that there weren't other people working, uh, but, but it was the enslaved African in the Americas. It was the colonization, enslavement of Africans even on the continent that was the basis of the development of the Western system, European system. All the wealth that they were able to um, to acquire over centuries had came at the expense of Africans being at the bottom of this hierarchy. And that's something that we have to be very clear of as black people, so it has been designed in that way. So we're, even if today, Dr. Wilson talks about this in the chapter, if you got rid of color today, it wouldn't matter, because now the very fact that we represent the uh, bottom class within the social system, uh, the equi- the, the unequal distribution of wealth allows for those people who control the wealth to continue to dominate those people who don't control the wealth, right? And then I'm, you just, I mean, just imagine, this is, if, if black people, you don't see color, now I just see you as a human being, talking about the African, right? I just see you as a human being now. Um, how is that gonna empower me in this system where, you know, I have no control over the land? I have no control over um, uh, the executive, legislative, judicious, judicial branch, you know? It won't matter, because I'm going, now what's gonna happen within the system, those people who represent the in-group, and those people who represent the out-group, uh, they'll find something else to, to uh, to uh, discriminate against in regards to you. They'll find another reason. Okay, it's not because you're black, you know? These people are poor, they gotta justify the reason why these people are poor, or in a position of um, of subservience, um, or, you know, they're in the position, they uh, represent the bottom class within the society. What's the reason for that? If it's not the color of the skin, oh, it's something about their culture then. There's always gonna be, that's what colonial capitalism does. It looks for distinctions to, to uh, justify, rationalize the reason why they're, that you are oppressed and exploited. It's not because of the actions of the oppressor, it's because of the culture or the actions of the oppressed. It's something that they're lacking. Um, and so with all of that being said, you know, we're, we're gonna come back to reality, right? And the reality is, is that, you know, our, the color of our skin, us being African people, you know, is the primary determinant of our position within this society. They're gonna always use that to justify, rationalize our position. So I spent a lot of time on that. So colonialism, colonialism is a practice of domination, which involves the subjugation of one people to another. Uh, so I do wanna pull up something, because right now, we're talking about institutional oppression, institutional um, exploitation. Uh, so when we're talking about racism, racism is um, can be, uh, you've had individual racism, you have institutional racism. And so y'all probably know, I, I'm about to go to uh, Kwame Ture, Stokely Carmichael at the time, his Black Power uh, book. Let me pull this up, where he talks about that, and I think this is important. Is relevant, and is important to, to be, you know, aware of these definitions, um, and aware of this, this uh, analysis. So uh, he was Stokely Carmichael at the time when this was written. Uh, and he says, "What is racism? The word has represented, represented deadly realities to millions of black people for centuries, yet it is really rarely defined, perhaps just because that reality has been such a commonplace. By racism, we mean the predication of decisions and policies on considerations of race for the purpose of subordinating a racial group and maintaining control over that group. That has been the practice of this country toward the black man. We shall see why and how. Racism is both overt and covert. It takes two closely related forms. Individual whites acting against individual blacks, and acts by the total white community against the black community." Individual whites acting against individual blacks and acts by the total white community against the black community. We call these individual race, individual racism, institutional racism. The first consists of overt acts by individuals which cause death, injury, or the violent destruction of property. This type can be recorded by television cameras. It can frequently be observed in the process of commission. The second type is less overt, far more subtle, less identifiable in terms of specific individuals committing the acts. But it is no less destructive of human life. The second type originates in the operation of established and respective forces in the society. And thus receives far less public condemnation than the first type. When white terrorists bomb a black church and kill five black children, this is an act of individual racism. Widely deplored by most segments of the society. But when in that same city, Birmingham, Alabama, five hundred black babies die each year because of the lack of proper food. Shelter and medical facilities. And thousands more are destroyed in Maine physically, emotionally and intellectually because of conditions of poverty. And discrimination in the black community, that is a function of institutional racism. When a black family moves into a home in a white neighborhood and is stone burned or rooted out. Routed out, they are victims of an overt act of individual racism, which many people will condemn. At least in words. But it is institutional racism that keeps black people locked in dilapidated slums, tenement, subject to the deadly prey of exploitative slum lords. Merchants, loan sharks and discriminatory real estate agents. Redlining, right? Redlining is a perfect example of institutional racism. The society either pretends it does not know. Of this latter situation, or is in fact incapable of doing anything meaningful about it. Uh, so I'm gonna stop there. So when it comes to this institutional racism. That's why again, going to Dr. Wilson's point about the color thing, if even if. In this system, we, everybody becomes colorblind. We don't see color anymore. I don't know how that, that can happen under the system, but, uh, if that was to happen. Redline, let's use redlining for an example. Uh, they can say that we're not loaning to, uh, uh, we're giving a high interest rates to the people in. This, in a certain district because, uh, it's a high risk based on, you know, credit scores or whatever. But the people that are in that community is predominantly black or brown, right? Well, I would say that, I would use that. Um, but the reason why the, their. High interest rates and these people are living in poverty, have bad credit and all of that. Is because of the racist, the historical racial racist acts. Um, uh, of individuals and of institutions. So now reinforces, this is why, you know, capitalism or racism works hand in hand, you know, it. Um, you know, the, it's sort of like it reinforces each other, you know? They're, they're poor because they're black. They're black because they're, you know, because they're poor. It goes like. Hand in hand under the system. So, you know, now it's like, we're not doing this because. We're racist, we're doing this because of the economic, the high risk of, of doing business with them. And so now a relationship is created where, um, the same people who have historically been impacted by racism. Is still being dominated by those people who are historically used racism to put themselves in a position of power. This is why, you know, for me, I think. Uh, separation is very important. Uh, I think is very important. And let, the only way that I say that. You know, our continued relationship with, with, um, the European within this society is that. We start from scratch, that we have to start from scratch, we have to redistribute this wealth. Uh, you know, I, I feel like that's a fantasy to even, you know, think that that would happen. Uh, I think it's more realistic that black people become organized and we begin to develop communities of our own. And, you know, operate as a, um, as an independent. You know, nation, even if we're still subjected to this society, it doesn't mean that we can't operate as a nation. And then when we, when we are able to attain enough power to say, you know what? You know, we no longer want to be under the confines of the United States government. For me, that's more realistic, but this is what organization is about. We're not organized, we can't. The way that we are now, we couldn't even make it the man like that, you know? Um, and so this is the struggle that we're having internally among ourselves. Um, and so, but we, you know, this is what this is about. We're going to continue to fight and bring our people together. Uh, so let me share, want to continue to share and peace to everybody too, you know, appreciate everybody joining. Uh, make sure you share as well, share the, um, podcast. That clock be ticking, that clock be ticking, man, let me go. Alright, let me get into this. Oh, I'm only on slide five. Alright, I'm gonna try to move expeditiously. Uh, so, uh, Amos and Wilson also said, unimputed intentionality of living systems, including. Especially human beings' self-realization, self-actualization, the fulfillment of genetic potential or possibilities. Right? And I think, um. I, I'm still, I'm still gonna be jumping back and forth, but this is a, a important point. What came to mind is just how. Um, you know, people, let me go to the next slide, because this, it connects. I'm connected with this slide right here. He also said, to be powerless is to be willless. Impotent and lifeless without effect or influence, to be nothing of no account. For some reason, I was just thinking about zombies, right? Um, in the Nation of Islam and the gods and earths, they used to, you know, well, they still say, right, the eighty-five percent, the dumb, deaf and blind. Right? Um, but it's people that's just like walking around, just clueless and, and these people are actually. Reacting to everything, um, that the system is throwing at them. They're being controlled, you know, what to wear. You know, um, how to talk. If you, I mean, they talk like the television and, and social media. I remember I was watching this movie, The Network. And there was a part in there where the guy, he was just snapping out, right? And he was on TV. And he was talking about the masses of people and he said, you know, we talk like the tube, talking tube as in television. We talk like the tube. We dress like the tube, you know, like we act like the tube. And he was talking about how the TV is just controlling. Our lives, like controlling our behavior, like our culture is being shaped by the television. Same thing today, right? When we talk about social media, we talk about still the television. How our culture is being shaped by these things. And the, the, the reason. I'm not going to say that, you know, we as individuals and as a community. Are, are shaping the culture. I think it does work in hand, hand in hand, but what happens is, is that. Now, you know, you have more of a, a majority today than you had before, like before. There was more diversity, I, I feel, because, uh, you don't necessarily know what's going in California without. You know, the media, without television, without social media. So somebody can take the culture of one group of people and impose that on, on millions and billions of people. Where now you can, I can go to Africa, the continent of Africa, and, and it will look like I'm in New York City. Or it will look like I'm in Philadelphia, right? Um, and so that's what I'm talking about, right? And this is, this is that method of control where we can get people to start. Acting and make it popular and then capitalize off of it. Uh, man, I wish it was just like more time to like really get into this. So let me just show you something too, um. In regards to, uh, well, I'm, I'm gonna wait to the end. This is a clip I want to show. So power is essential to our existence and the most. Influential factor in determining our quality of life. Uh, he's, this is also another quote from chapter one. He said, we must be ever conscious of the fact that the establishment. Whatever rewards it gives us will also, if necessary, to maintain its control, kill us. Let me stop this. We're familiar with this right here. Coin Tepro, counter, counterintelligence program, Ohururu, Ohururu Conrad. Um, we're familiar with the counterintelligence program, right? And I want to pull this up. I'll put this link in the chat too. I, I think you'll find this interesting. But we, you know, I'm, I'm going soon, most of us already know about this program, right, to prevent a black Messiah. Um, this is straight from the FBI file right here. So I, I'm gonna put this link in here. Because this is a whole, if you go through this whole document, oh my goodness, man, because this, it's bigger than just. Uh, uh, this, the, um, prevention of the rise of a black Messiah. But in their own words, make sure, yeah, alright. Um, so right here, primary document right here, counterintelligence program, black nationalist hate groups. Uh, nationalist activity and interests and counterintelligence to coordinate this program. This agent will be responsible for the periodic progress, letters being requested, but each agent working this type of case. Should participate in a formulation of counterintelligence operation. Goals for the maximum effectiveness, effectiveness of the counterintelligence program. And to prevent wasted effort, long-range goals are, are, um, what's that, are. Man, I can't even make that out. Said, alright, but, uh, number one, oh, being said, okay, long-range goals are being set. I see it now. Um, so one, prevent the coalition of militant black nationalist groups. In unity, there is strength, a truism that is no less valid for all its triteness. An effective coalition of black nationalist groups might be the first step toward a real mile mile in America, the beginning of a true black revolution. Malcolm used to talk about that, right? Like they scared, you know, they don't want a mile mile in the United States. They even put in their own FBI file. They was petrified, petrified of the, uh, mile mile, right? Malcolm X, you know, he would say when they, you know, they hear mile mile, I mean, they would hear Ohururu. When they would hear Ohururu, they would get scared. You know, the mile mile is, is in the area that, or the, or the mile miles coming and Ohururu means freedom. Right? So that cry, that cry for freedom, they don't want to hear us saying that. So, um, so the prevention of a mile mile. Uh, Meghav Evans, Meghav Evans and Charles, his brother Charles Evers. Were actually having a conversation about organizing a similar group in the United States, the mile mile, but they decided not to do it. Uh, for practical reason, what they felt was practical reasons. They were worried about the retaliation. Indiscriminate retaliation against black people, so never happened, alright? Uh, so it's just something to think about. I'm not saying I'm on YouTube right now. People are, you know, I, so I gotta watch what I say, but this is interesting though. This is interesting. Number two, prevent the rise of a Messiah. Who could unify and electrify the militant black nationalist movement? Malcolm X might have been such a Messiah. He is the martyr of the movement today. Martin Luther King, Stokely Carmichael and Elijah Muhammad all aspire to this position. Elijah Muhammad is less of a threat because of his age. King could be a very real contender for this position should he abandon his supposed obedience to white liberal doctrines. And embrace black nationalism. Carmichael has the necessary charisma to be a real threat in this way. Now, I don't know how y'all read, how you guys are reading this, but this is my interpretation. They know what it would take for black people to liberate themselves. And then this number two, they're telling you that, you know, black nationalism is the way to liberation. Um, and when I look at black nationalists, I look at it more in the international way, not, you know, the traditional like narrow nationalist. You know, way of it, because I'm an internationalist. You know, I, I believe black people need to be connected all over. Um, uh, and create this international sort of, uh, uh, state, something that transcends boundaries, right? Uh, but wherever we are though, we need to be controlling the politics, economics, right, in our respective areas. But in order for it to like work, you know, I think there has to be a, a international, um, uh, relationship or network. Um, so that there isn't this dependency. Now on the continent, they, you know, they probably. If you're on the continent, Africans probably can be more self-sufficient and independent. But if you're not on the continent, man, if you are in America, you're in Europe. And so you're going to need that connection with the continent where those resources are, right? Uh, or we're going to be dependent on these Europeans. Uh, so with that being said though. They know what's up. They said that King, King, if he, you know, he will be a real contender for the position if he abandoned. His supposed obedience to white liberal doctrines. Leave those white liberal doctrines alone, man. Get away from it. Uh, so number three, prevent violence on the part of black nationalist groups. This is the primary importance. And is of course a goal of our investigative activity. It should also be a goal of the counterintelligence program. So what are they doing? Just think about it. Okay, we gotta, we gotta get. The masses of people to not think about defending themselves. We gotta get black people not to think about revolution, right? So what kind of, it, it makes you think like, what were they doing? Right? What, what type of campaigns, what type of media manipulation? What were they putting, making sure that, what type of education in the schools that black people are receiving? Uh, who are we gonna put in these organizations to influence these organizations? To adopt certain policies and think a, a particular way? So they would have to shape society, would have to shape black society, our community. To think and behave in a particular way in order for this to not happen, right? They not just talking, the FBI ain't just talking. They, they're very good at theory and practice. They are very good at implementing things. Putting things into practice and action, right? That's not a problem they have. So through counterintelligence, it should be possible to pinpoint. Potential troublemakers and neutralize them, neutralize them before they exercise their potential for violence. How many people we don't know? How many people we, we know the Fred Hamptons, right? The Bobby Huttons, how many people we don't talk about in the, that been neutralized, right? Prevent militant black nationalist groups and leaders from gaining respectability. How do we get them from gaining respectability, right? They think black nationalists and Pan-Africanists, we looked at, it's like we're crazy. We start talking about revolution. And so we have to tell it our language in a way that don't scare people off, right? Because they made revolution, they made black nationalism, they made the call for black power. All of these things, uh, you know, come with negative connotations, man. Talks of reverse racism, all of these, you know, things that, you know, um. You know, these people are out of their mind, radical extremists. You know, all of these things are, are, this narrative is put out there. Uh, to make it more difficult for us to organize the masses of people. You must discredit these groups and individuals to first, to first, the responsible Negro community, the responsible Negro community. Second, they must be discredited to the white community, right? They definitely wanted this, because if you're able to get white people to support. Uh, revolution, then it's, it's, it's checkmate. Both the responsible community and the liberals who have. Uh, vestiges of sympathy for militant black nationalists simply because they are Negroes. Third, these groups must be discredited in the eyes of Negro radicals, the followers of the movement. This last area requires entirely different tactics from the first two. Publicity about violent tendencies and radical statements merely enhances black nationalists to the last group. It adds respectability in a different way. Five, a final goal should be to prevent the long-range growth of militant black nationalist organizations, especially among youth. Specific tactics to prevent these groups from converting young people must be developed. Uh, so where, when we talk about. Black nationalist groups, you, especially in history, who do we talk about? We might say the Revolutionary Action Movement. Sixties, revolution, um, the, um, uh, Republic of New Africa in the sixties. Going into the seventies too, I would, I would say in the seventies, but they were founded in the sixties, right? Um, the Black Panther Party, sixties. Uh, the Nation of Islam was really, you know, big in the sixties. I mean, we can go back to the sixties and we could talk, even the civil rights organizations from Core, S E L C, SNCC. Right? These organizations, we could talk about the sixties all day in these movements, right? So I mean, what was happening like really in the seventies and eighties, like where, where was the black nationalists, you know, groups? Like who are these people that was making noise in the seventies and the eighties? Alright, do we look at the seventies and eighties and even the nineties, the same, in the same way in regards to movements as the sixties? Not saying that there's none that existed, but. Who had the, the, the public attention and the national notoriety of the Black Panthers in the seventies, eighties and the nineties? Right? Think about that, man. Right here, it tells you, you know, prevent the long-range growth of, growth of militant black nationalist organizations. Did they, did they meet their goal? We still out here though, organizing, but something to think about. Uh, besides these five goals, counterintelligence, viable part. So I'm gonna stop this, let me put this link in the, in the chat, because it's more than, that's just one page. Um, one, two pages, two hundred and seventy-page document. And there's other, um, FBI documents in here too, so if you got, if you had the time. You want to go through it. Let me get that to you. Hope, hopefully that's a clickable link. Ho- hopefully that's a clickable link. Alright, um so let me share, let me go back. Alright, and go back to this PowerPoint. Trying to show discipline, kind of right, it gets tough sometimes, man, this information. This information, no problem. Hopefully it's clickable, uh don't look like it's clickable on my end, but um. Alright. Let's go. Let's go, let's go, let's go. No matter what rewards, whatever rewards, I want, go back to that, we must be ever conscious of the fact that the establishment. Whatever rewards it gives us will also, if necessary, to maintain its control, kill us, man. Um so he goes through the typologies of power, we discuss force. Coercion, we discuss influence, competent legitimate authorities' power, manipulation is power. Um and that, you know, on here, you can see there's other methods of power too that are used. Uh but these were the ones that he focused on in this chapter. Um forces power. He talked about powers, force involves exercise of biological. Physical means to prevent another person or group from doing what he or it prefers to do, or to get something to happen to the person or group. That he or it would prefer it did not, right? Which is used, and this is important too, like force may be used instrumentally rather than directly to achieve certain ends. Because force is inefficient, but force. Is necessary to to at least. Uh uh be able to seduce a people, right? Other for, other forms of power. Are gonna come later, um but in order to get a group, it to enslave a people, um to bring a people. From one uh side of the ocean to the other side of the ocean, the African transatlantic uh slave trade, that experience. Force uh labor to get people to give up their, uh not give up, but to um. Forsake their culture, uh that's not the word I wanna use either, but. Um in order to to get a people to do something that you want them to do, right? Uh uh so you're disrupting their culture, if you're gonna disrupt a group's culture, their way of life. You're gonna have to use force, right? And so this is force, force. Uh is something that was more prevalent. In the the, in the establishment of the colonial uh state. Uh settle colonialism uh happened through force. But now, once you have um subdued the people and you trying to create a system. Force is gonna be inefficient, you're gonna be expending too too much resources. Right? A lot of resources to be able to force a person to do something, and we know how hard that is, right? To force somebody, like you actually wanna, you know, get somebody to pick cotton or or um. Or um what else, pick cotton or or tobacco, you know, to do these things. It's difficult, you have to be able to get those people to decide, make a choice to do it themselves. And so instrumental, the instrumental use of force such as coercion, uh is more effective, is more efficient. Um but it's not the most efficient use of force, but he talks about this, again, force being inefficient, kind of just like slide through these. Um again, Dr. Wilson, he touches on the force of um. The impact that force. Uh or or the mind, i- i- in regards to the the power of the mind. The ultimate force in the world is the force of the mind, when that force is defeated, all is lost. Uh psychic violence, right? This is an example of of someone bullying, right? The, and the colonizer has used bullying tactics to be able to coerce. Uh manipulate African people into doing things for over centuries, so. Over centuries, the centuries of this psychic violence. Traumatizing uh African people, you know, has really conditioned. African people to normalize colonialism. I I'll say that again, like this psychic balance that has been used, and the other methods of force. Uh that has been used has conditioned African people to the point that we have normalized colonialism. I've never seen so many happy people, man, under colonialism, bro. It's crazy. But, you know, I don't know, I, like colonialism is not something that we should be uh get used to. Not something that we should be accepting, it's a system of exploitation. Colonial capitalism is parasitic. Uh so psychic violence, uh Dr. Wilson said blacks are unwitting unwittingly. Right? Manipulated into forming alliances with the oppressors and exploiters and disempowering themselves. And empowering those who dominate and exploit them all the more. And this is why a lot of um. Uh uh black leaders begin to organize or create organizations. That did not allow white people in those organizations, because they got hip to the game. White people would join these organizations with their white liberal agenda, right? And they would. Uh throw the the movement off track. Uh this would happen, this is why um. Uh who organized the March on Washington? Not Dr. King, the first March on Washington, um A Phil, A Philip Randolph. That March on Washington, he was like, no, we don't want no white people involved in this March on Washington, this is all black, this is exclusive. And the reason he wanted to do that is because he felt that white people would join these organizations. And for one, it would um uh it would have an impact on the morale and the psyche of black people. You know, feeling this this sort of dependency on white people that they can't do. Like create, uh organize a march on their own, like we can't organize an organization. For the liberation of black people without the help of white people, like that sort of thing, right? Um and so, you know, Dr. Emerson Wilson is on point, whether they're doing it, uh whether they're joining for um. May- maybe they're joining the organizations because in their heart, you know, they really think that. You know, they wanna do something to help black people, but at the end of the day, their experiences is different, right? So it has to, we have to lead our own, we have to be our own liberators, as uh uh Jaleel Baba Jaleel Mutakim uh would say. Or Enduko, I think you don't like to be called Baba, I would say Endugu. Enduko, Endugu means brothers, so Endugu. Uh um Jaleel uh Mutakim would say, we are our own liberators, right? We have to be at the forefront, at the vanguard of our own liberation, not, you know, side by side. Or underneath the leadership of the colonizer. So that's an important fact. Coercion, so let me, this is important, coercion is the instrumental use of force or the threatened use of force by the power holder. To attain the compliance of another. A coercer may succeed without possessing either the capability or the intention of using force. So long as the power subject believes he possesses, possesses both. And so, uh alright, so in this picture right here, he's holding a gun to his head, you probably can't see. What that says, but on that gun, it says, right here, it says water gun. I thought this was a good image, right? Now, it could be a real gun, you know. But with coercion, it don't necessarily have to be real, that's the point of that saying water gun. So coercion could happen where someone actually has a real gun and it's telling you, hey, you know, you need to do this. Um but. You know, there could be a point, and I think like this is where manipulation comes into play, right? Uh and legitimate authority, uh where we think that the the oppressor or the colonizer. Is more um has more authority or more skilled at something or possesses more power. Uh than we have, or has the uh capability of enforcing something. Or getting us to do something, uh and if we don't do it. There's a punishment, some sort of punishment, whether, you know, incarceration or even death. You know, these sort of things, over time, again, it has conditioned us to normalize colonialism, right? Um and to the point where now a lot of us, we perceive that. White people is like all powerful and, you know, no, we can't go against against them, it's too late. We wanna have to do something to try to reform the system or get along in the best way that we can. Under the system of colonialism, that's a lot of people think like that, man, and I know you've had conversations probably with people who think like that. But we can't think like that, you know, we gotta keep pushing this forward. And definitely educate the babies to liberate themselves, right? That's a subservient attitude mindset. That's a dependency mindset, man, we can't operate outside of white folks or we can't. You know, uh topple the system that is oppressing and exploiting us. Like what type of, that's a, that's a slave mindset right there. Um so just moving along, I'm gonna go through these next couple of slides. Really fast, just to point out what he discussed, so he talked about the productivity of coercion. Uh influences power, think that was a powerful image as well, influences the power capacity of causing. An effect indirect indirect or intangible ways. The act of power of producing an effect without apparent exertion of force or direct exercise to command, to have an effect on the condition of. Um. Uh let's say the condition or development of. Uh types of influence, you talk about rational persuasion, personal persuasion, expertise, competent authority. Propagandistic persuasion, and you know, I just want to encourage. Uh everybody, if you haven't been uh following these studies. You can go back and I really get into all of this in its own. Uh videos, so there's no need for me to spend too much more time. Uh influences power is another quote by Dr. Wilson, um competent and legitimate authority. Uh lit, and and to go back to just the uh coercion. Or instrumental force, uh y'all should take like take down, I'm, I really wanna do some workshops on this stuff, man. But just like write down the different instrumental use uses of force, right, or coercion. That are used, I think these are things that we had to be conscious of, like how is, this is why Dr. Emerson Wilson is talking about. Like how is power being used to subdue us? How is power being used to control us? Uh uh to be able to oppress and exploit us? Like, we have to be conscious of all of the strategies and methods that are being used against us. And the strategies and methods that we can be used, that we can use to get ourselves out of this situation. Uh legitimate authority, manipulation is power. Um and then he goes into uh forms where manipulation may occur, I think this is the last slide. Alright, alright. Right, I know I went through those last few slides quickly, but again, you can really. Hold on, was I? Wasn't sure, was I, was I sharing my screen all that time? I feel like I wasn't sharing, let me know in the chat, would, did y'all see those slides? Or I was just talking, I was just chatting. Hopefully y'all was able to uh see that, but anyway, you know, as long as y'all was able to hear me, it's all good. Alright, check this out though, before, before we, uh okay, alright, awesome. Uh so before y'all, the part ways, man, I wanted to pull something else up for you. Uh check this clip out, man, this is Zygeist, if you haven't seen Zygeist, Zygeist is pretty old now, but um. But it was really big when it first came, yeah, right, every Zygeist, Zygeist films was 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 pretty big. I wanna show this clip, it's about one minute, no, it's about two minutes. Um very relevant to what I was just discussing, shit, my screen. Just as these methods of control, man, gotta be conscious, that's why we gotta break away from this damn system, boy. Alright, check this out.
The fractional reserve policy perpetrated by the Federal Reserve, which has spread in practice to the great majority of banks in the world. Is, in fact, a system of modern slavery. Think about it, money is created out of debt, and what do people do when they are in debt? They submit to employment to pay it off. But if money can only be created out of loans, how can society ever be debt-free? It can't, and that's the point. And it is the fear of losing assets coupled with the struggle to keep up with the perpetual debt and inflation inherent in the system. Compounded by the inescapable scarcity within the money supply itself. Created by the interest that can never be repaid, that keeps the wage slave in line. Running on the hamster wheel with millions of others, in effect powering an empire. That truly benefits only the elite at the top of the pyramid. Four, at the end of the day, who are you really working for? The banks. Money is created in a bank and invariably ends up in a bank. They are the true masters, along with the corporations and governments they support. Physical slavery requires people to be housed and fed. Economic slavery requires people to feed and house themselves. It is one of the most ingenious scams for social manipulation ever created, and at its core. It is an invisible war against the population. Debt is the weapon used to conquer and enslave societies, and interest is its prime ammunition.
Right, one thing that he, he failed to mention is that is African people. You know, that are are the ones who was being exploited by the system, and that ruling class he's talking about. Those are the Europeans who set up and designed this system. That's, that's, yeah, when he say people, what people are you talking about? You know, those are the Europeans that that are at the, any black institution, you know, any power that black people are exercising. Within this system, you know, is relative, like when when you speak about. Uh relative power, like that compared to the power that the European is able to exercise within this international system. You know, African people, cuz where is our military that is able to go against these European countries? I mean, French is self-named an African country. That can, I mean, we can get into some, as Malcolm say, we can get into some guerrilla action if we really organize. Um but they, you know, when you talk about nuclear weapons, technology that they have. If they were able to um uh if the world would just let them loose on an African nation, right? And they can be brutal, like they can, like we know that they can, animalistic, like we know that they can. They will wipe out African nation, man. No, with no problem, especially if we're not organized, I'm talking about one state against another state. You know, uh cuz these Europeans have underdeveloped us in this relationship, they make sure that we don't have the technology. Or the military might to be able to take them on, this is why African nations are bringing in these European nations, right? For assistance. Um uh because of uh the incapability, and we do have the potential for that power if we just organize among ourselves. The thing is, we so separated that we don't go to other African nations. And organize with other African nations to solve our problems, we have to go to the European. What is, I mean, what is a French military, British military or American military going in Africa? Uh but the, but the point I'm making though is, uh even though you have. Uh Africans, I'm talking, just generally speaking, right, not just on the continent, but outside of the continent, that have resources. May may have banks, you know, but where does that bank fit in in the global system? You know, like where, where does it position, these African people position themselves in the global system as compared to Europeans in this global system? In order for a a economic, a global economic um. Economic decisions to be made, you know, like the IMF, a lot of them have to go through the WTO, the uh 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 the World. World Trade Organization, the IMF and the World Bank. But the thing is with the World Bank and the IMF, which I try to, you know, let people know, they use weighted voting, weighted voting. And weighted, and by weighted voting, we're talking about the uh amount of resources that a country contributes. To the IMF and the World Bank. And those resources, those countries that are contributing the most are the developed countries. So when it comes to economic policies, international policies. Uh uh the UK, the United States, Germany, France, those countries have the most say in the direction. Of um of the global economy, and which way they're gonna go, and we already know about the G seven, G eight. Like these, these um institutions, even the G twenty that's dominated by these European nations, right? So you can't tell me, you know, when we're talking about those people, those people are Europeans, man, at the end of the day. Uh but with that being said, man, I I know I said I was gonna go into chapter two, but I already. but I already kept, I kept myself, I've been here for a little more than an hour. Um, but I wanna appreciate y'all for tuning in. And for all those people who are gonna be tuning in later, make sure you subscribe to the channel if you haven't subscribed. Make sure you share this, uh, I try to be here every Sunday at nine PM. Unless I'm engaged in some organizing work or something else, I'm gonna make it, uh, my duty, uh, to be here. But I may do these, uh, sessions in between the Sundays too, if I have time to do so. Um, and hopefully, you know, I can find some time. Also, our Saturday podcast will be back on May sixth. Uh, there, there's some scheduling conflicts, uh, for those in Philadelphia, we have, or if you're in the Philadelphia area, uh, this Saturday, we have the Uhuru Festival in Philadelphia at Clark Park. Uh, so, you know, if you're in the area, come up, pull up to Clark Park, that's gonna be from nine to five. Uh, Chairman Omah, I don't know if I should say who's going, but come through. It's gonna be, um, you know, um, probably somewhere close to a hundred vendors out there. Uh, there's gonna be a stage, some culture out there, it's gonna be a really, uh, powerful and dope event, uh, revolving around, again, it's the health festival, so we're gonna talk about the contradictions of, of the health of African people under the system of colonialism, right? Uh, and colonialism is bad for, for our health. Uh, also the following week, uh, the twenty ninth, if you're in the New York area, um, organizing an event in Bed-Stuy. Uh, so you could follow me at Global Mbutu Foundation, I'm always posting, uh, what's going on, whether it's something I'm organizing or something, you know, other, uh, people who are part of the black liberation movement is organizing. I try to make sure that we're all conscious and aware of the work that's being done out there so we can, you know, we can't say we, we didn't know what was happening or nobody's doing anything. Every time I turn around, I see our people organizing and doing something, right? So, um, you know, we can't use that excuse. Uh, yeah, he will, I was, I was gonna hold back, uh, you know? I don't know, something about cer- saying certain things in public, I'm, and you know, the chairman, he been, uh, you know, dealing with, with, with this FBI situation, so. Uh, but he will be there, yes, yes, comrade, he will be there. Uh, alright, so with that being said, man, I'm gonna sign out. And, uh, Amani, that means peace, Uhuru, that means freedom. Uh, until next time, you know, black power, man, stay, get organized, y'all.